So good morning to those of us who have joined us, members of the public. This is a public hearing for the Building Performance Standards Rulemaking. We will begin in just a minute. I will maybe allow another minute or two for folks to continue to join us. My clock shows 10 o'clock, so maybe we'll give it another minute. So good morning to those of you who are joining us today. I see we've got a few more people trickling in. So I will get started with our introductory remarks. And hopefully we'll have everyone here when we're ready to dig into the substance. So after I give some introductory remarks, we will introduce the OTO staff who are on the call. I will share some, a little bit of background about the proposed rules and the rulemaking process. And then we will offer an opportunity for the attendees to offer public comments. And then we will also offer opportunities for any attendees to ask any kind of clarifying or procedural questions about the rulemaking. So I will go ahead and start the hearing. So good morning, everyone. My name is Wendy Simons. I work at the Oregon Department of Energy. And as well as being the rulemaking coordinator, I am the hearing officer for today's public hearing. So we thank all of you who are here participating today. So materials for this hearing, including draft rules, are located on the OTO website. So oregon.gov/energy. And then if you follow the tabs at the top for Get Involved, and then select Rulemaking, and then select Building Energy Performance Standards Program, you will find a lot of materials about the rulemaking. And we also have other materials on the program website. And I will share both of those links as we get into the hearing. So next slide, please, Blake. So this is just the brief agenda for the meeting. So I'm offering a few introductory remarks. Then we will introduce the OTO staff. We'll give an overview very briefly of the bill and the Building Performance Standard. We'll offer the opportunity for public comments, questions and clarifications. And then we'll wrap up the public hearing. So next slide. First, a quick overview of OTO's mission and activities, which include adopting energy efficiency standards and implementing energy programs. So our mission is to help Oregonians make informed decisions and maintain a resilient and affordable energy system. We advance solutions to shape an equitable clean energy transition, protect the environment and public health, and responsibly balance energy needs and impacts for current and future generations. So the Building Performance Standard fits into a few of the different types of activities. There will be a lot of energy data and information, as well as offering technical assistance, regulation and oversight, and also energy programs. So this fits squarely in our department mission. So next slide, please, Blake. Here we have a few words, a few tips on using WebEx for those of you who may be new to the platform. So there are a few different features in WebEx that you will see. I know sometimes there's some slightly different screens that people see for OTO or for WebEx, but you should be able to see on the bottom little reaction opportunity where there's a hand. So you can use that to raise your hand. We'll ask people to raise their hands if they're interested in offering comments. And then we, our meeting host will unmute you and you'll be able to offer your comment. We also have a little, like a bubble for the chat that's down, should be down in the right-hand corner of your screen, bottom right-hand corner. And we will ask people if you would like to introduce yourself or just kind of note who you are and the organization you represent. You're welcome to do that. We will try to monitor the chat and catch if there are any other questions or anything that show up. But we definitely encourage you to raise your hand and just to make sure that we catch any of the comments and questions that anyone has. And am I missing anything else? I think that's it from the standpoint of attendees. But I will just mention also, as you might be able to see on your screen, we are recording this hearing to maintain our permanent record. And just for the record, today is November 13th, 2024. We began this hearing at 10:01. The hearing, the time that I have now on my screen is 10:06. This public hearing is being held online and all attendees are participating remotely. So this is the time and date set for a public rulemaking hearing. The purpose is to take public comments on proposed permanent rules to implement House Bill 3409, Sections 8 through 17. So actually you may be able to go to the next slide here, Blake. I think yes. Which directed OTO to adopt, or House Bill 3409, Sections 8 through 17, directed OTO to adopt rules to implement Building Energy Performance Standards for existing commercial buildings. The filing caption for this rulemaking is "The Establishment of Oregon Building Energy Performance Standards Program." The notice for today's hearing was filed with the Oregon Secretary of State on September 26th, 2024, and was published in the October 2024 Oregon Bulletin. This hearing will be conducted according to the Oregon Administrative Procedures Act, which is in ORS Chapter 183, and the Attorney General's model rules. In addition to the opportunity to present oral comments at this hearing today, anyone may submit written comments to me by email. And I know I've already received several comments. So thank you to those of you who've sent in your comments already. So my email address is wendy.simons@energy.oregon.gov. And that information is also available on the OTO rulemaking website. So you may email those comments to me until the close of business, which is 5:00 PM on Friday, November 15th, 2024. And that is the close of the public comment period. And just a note that we cannot extend the public comment period for, just for one or two folks. If we did extend a public comment period for any reason, we would extend it for everyone. So now I'd like to do a quick round of introductions of the OTO staff who are on the call. And I see several of the attendees are putting their name and their organization in the chat. So thank you very much. That helps us. But feel free to do that. So again, my name is Wendy Simons. I'm a rulemaking coordinator at OTO and have been supporting Blake and other staff on the codes and various codes and standards rulemakings over several years, as well as this BPS rulemaking. So Blake, would you like to introduce yourself next?
Yes, thanks, Wendy. My name is Blake Shalide. I'm the manager of the Codes and Standards Section at the Oregon Department of Energy.
Thanks. Yeah. And Madeline?
Sure thing. Hi, I'm Madeline Adwire. I'm the Policy Analyst and Program Analyst for BPS.
I'm just going right across my screen. So next I have Alan Zelenka.
Hi, I'm Alan Zelenka. I'm the Assistant Director for Planning Innovation, which codes and standards of BPS is in that division.
Thanks, Alan. Kristi? See if Kristi's able to.
I am. Hi, Kristi Split. I'm our Government Relations Coordinator, just here to listen today. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
And Lisa, are you able to speak or no?
Yes. Hi, I'm Lisa Gartland. I'm with the Oregon Department of Energy. I'm a Facilities Engineer in the Codes and Standards Group, working on the BPS program, among other things. Hi.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. And Abby, did you want to quickly introduce yourself? You're our host for today.
Yeah, hi, I'm Abby Reefer. I'm the Division Assistant with Planning and Innovation at OTO. If you guys have any, like, technical issues with WebEx, you can always send me a message and I'd love to help you out.
Great, yeah. So she, Abby should be listed under the host for the meeting. So she's a really great resource and very familiar with WebEx. So, great, thank you. So now I will share just a very brief overview of the legislation and draft rules for the Building Performance Standard Program. So again, the Building Performance Standard was adopted as part of House Bill 3409 from the 2023 legislative session. This is a policy addressing energy use and greenhouse gas emissions from existing commercial buildings, which account for nearly 20% of energy use in Oregon. It will require many large commercial buildings to enhance their energy management practices and implement efficiency measures to meet energy use targets. And as I think many of you know, it is directed, and we were directed by the legislation to model these Building Energy Performance Standards on ASHRAE Standard 100. And we're using the 2024 version of that standard. The Building Performance Standard will be administered by OTO and in many respects is modeled after a very similar program in the state of Washington. Next slide, please. So this graphic, I think, shares a lot of information about the types of buildings that are covered. And so really the scope of the program. We've got Tier One buildings that will be required to meet the standard. While we also, and we also have Tier Two buildings that are required to do energy benchmarking, as noted on this slide. The compliance with this new standard is staggered, starting with the largest buildings in June 1st, 2028, 200,000 square feet and over. Then the next compliance is a year later. And the next compliance date for this smaller buildings, 35,000 square feet and over, is in 2030. And then you also notice that smaller buildings are not covered under the standard. And this information and more, so maybe next slide, please. This, and a future slide, kind of the next slide after this, will have some web addresses where you can find more details. But just as a general concept, the draft rules establish that the Building Energy Performance Standard for Oregon will be modeled upon this American National Standard Institute's standards. And that's the ANSI/ASHRAE Standard 100, 2024 version, with Oregon-specific amendments. And on the OTO rulemaking webpage, you will find a draft version of ASHRAE Standard 100 with those Oregon-specific amendments. And House Bill 3409 gave direction to OTO guidelines and requirements for the types of amendments that should be considered for the Oregon version. And the amendments that you would see on our webpage also incorporate input from a rulemaking advisory committee, which was also required under the bill and has been meeting since, I believe, February of this year. And has had, I might have, might have the exact number of meetings, but I believe eight to nine meetings. So next, next slide, please, Blake. So here are links where you can find more information, background information and resources on what is in the draft rules. The bill, it's, here's a link for the bill itself. There's a lot of information on our rulemaking webpage, including links to the draft rules and the hearing notice. And I would mention that the various guidelines and requirements for the OTO amendments or the Oregon-specific amendments are included in the bill. But there's also a nice summary in the hearing notice of everything we were required to consider in drafting the draft amendments for Oregon. There's also, the program webpage includes links to presentations from the various public meetings. In addition to the RAC or Rulemaking Advisory Committee meetings, we held several public meetings. And last but not least, again, here's just a summary of the key dates going forward. So maybe, I think we'll leave this slide up while we allow people to offer the public comments. And again, public comment period closes on Friday, November 15th at 5:00 PM. And there is my email address. And OTO plans to file the rules before the end of December 2024, and the rules will be effective January 1st, 2025. So that concludes my comments. And as the hearing officer, so at this time, I would like to invite members of the public to offer their oral comments. So again, please raise your hand. And we will unmute you and can call in people, one by one. When, before you begin your comments, please, please share your name and the organization that you represent. So we know, know who you're, who's, who it's coming from.
And Wendy, this is Blake. Before we move on to public comments, I just wanted to also note that in addition to emailing any written comments to Wendy, we also have the comment portals set up online, too, that you may submit comments through those portals as well. So both, both avenues of commenting, written comments, will get to us.
Yeah, thanks, Blake. I forgot to mention that. And several people have, have sent comments in using the portal. So we appreciate that. So I'm just looking at the attendees and who has hands up. So far, I see three people. I see Alan Jurnay, Danny Grady, McKinstry, and Tim Miller, and Brad Reed. So do you want to start with? I've got alphabet, it's listing alphabetically for me. So I see Alan Jurnay first. Go ahead, Alan. So Alan Jurnay, it looks like you're unmuted. Are you able to? Yeah, I'm not hearing, not hearing Alan. But I'm also not showing him muted anymore either. Can we try one?
Oh, sorry, Wendy. I went ahead and unmuted him, but now it's not giving him any audio options. So I'm not really sure what's going on.
Can we try another person to see if this is, if this is a problem for everyone?
Absolutely.
Or do we need to unmute everyone? I don't know.
Let's see, I've got Tim next, so I'll try to unmute him.
Okay, I'm seeing. Yeah, I see a green microphone next to your, on my screen. Go ahead. Yes, I can hear you. Yeah.
Very good. Okay, thank you all. My name is Tim Miller. I'm the Director of Oregon Business for Climate. And we're a group of business leaders across the state in all industries that are looking to make progress on addressing climate change, both as an imperative for our communities, but it's also an opportunity for our business community. Wendy, I see you have some frowns going on. Is everything going just fine?
Everything's going fine with you. I'm still trying to figure out why we can't hear Alan.
Okay, good. Just wanted to check. Thank you. So that's who we are. I just wanted to say, we strongly support the BPS policy and the rules as you have created them. I would say you started with a really smart approach, right? You started with a law, 3409, that has a clear and balanced target. The average makes sense. It's a reasonable target to go for. It's a smart, business-oriented approach that focuses on measures that save money. That you couldn't be more business-friendly than that. You focused on larger buildings. The rule, I mean, the law did that, makes great sense. And you're using a national standard. So those, all those pieces are really easily, just easy to support from a business perspective. And then you made the rules even better on top of that. And I'm just encouraging you to keep the rules strong and to pay attention to these things that you have done. First of all, you've made a bunch of adjustments to simplify some of the planning and reporting requirements relative to the Washington rule. You've made some of those planning requirements optional. You've narrowed it down to just the things that really matter. That's a great approach. We encourage you to keep the spirit of the law, which includes greenhouse gas emissions. So keep those elements in the rule that ask building owners and, and their consultants to look at the GHG opportunities, along with the energy, just the pure energy reduction opportunities. You know, some folks might push back, hey, this is a tough time for an already strained industry. Well, frankly, the rule doesn't really kick in until 2027. There's time to figure this out, plenty of time. And on that note, on 2027, I would just say, thank you for picking that projected average as your target, the 2027 projected average as the target. That's a smart way to go. Finally, I would say that there are a bunch of other benefits that come along with this rule and this law from a business standpoint. It's going to create jobs in the clean energy community and some of the innovative products that we have to help solve these, these energy challenges. It's going to create jobs in installers and contractors doing the work. It also creates sort of secondary benefits in the buildings themselves. Employees will be more comfortable, healthier, improved air quality. And then adjacent to those buildings, the outdoor emissions, the co-emissions will be reduced for our communities, especially our communities that are most vulnerable. This is good news for them. So it's a reduction of not just GHGs, but other emissions. So just to reiterate, keep the rules strong as you've crafted them. I think you've done a great job with the benefit of experts. You're implementing a smart law with smart rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Abby, can we try Alan Jurnay again? Okay, I see a green microphone. Can you try again, Alan?
Okay, can you hear me? I didn't realize you couldn't before.
No, now we can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Alan Jurnay. I comment on behalf of the 2,000 Oregonians who are Southern Oregon Climate Action Now to support the strongest possible Building Performance Standards. As rural Oregonians living on the front lines of the climate crisis, we are well aware of the need for us all, locally, statewide and globally, to take whatever steps we can to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It is in this vein and on these draft rules that I wish to comment on behalf of SOCAN. One, we support the notion of imposing the strongest possible efficiency standards on buildings as a way of reducing their climate pollution. We appreciate and support the development of energy use intensity metrics for buildings that recognize that averages based on all buildings of a certain type will be colored by the reality that newer construction is more energy efficient than older construction. We understand that the Level One audit is inadequate to discern irregularities and that OTO should demand a more rigorous audit than Level One as an alternative compliance pathway for those not meeting the BPS target. We are pleased that greenhouse gas pollution is assessed to allow selection of compliance measures that minimize climate pollution. We encourage OTO to retain the requirement that large utilities share information and encouraging, encourage adopting a similar requirement for small utilities. We argue that it's reasonable that building owners should provide information regarding their BPS compliance to tenants and potential tenants. And finally, we argue that OTO should not compromise the computation of targets by including in the basis for computing these targets, buildings that have not complied. Thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Alan. So I'm glad we were able to, to hear you. I have next Brad Reed. So it looks like you're unmuted now, Brad. Go ahead. Oops. We're briefly unmuted. Oh, there you go.
All right, looks like I'm unmuted. You hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Excellent. Good morning, everybody. My name is Brad Reed. I'm the Campaign Director for Building Resilience. It's a statewide coalition campaign of more than 50 organizations representing climate justice and public health, business and labor, faith and frontline communities, environmental, family and youth organizations, as well as thousands of individual Oregonians. Our goal is for all Oregonians to have access to healthy, affordable, resilient homes and buildings that run on clean energy. We were the leading advocacy organization behind the legislation that set up the Building Performance Standard Program. Large commercial buildings are responsible for a lion's share of climate pollution from the building sector and use a lot of energy. Increasing energy efficiency for these buildings is critically important for the health and comfort of workers, visitors, customers, as well as local air quality and utility bill savings for tenants. We're happy about all the benefits this will bring for Oregon. Building Resilience supports OTO's draft rules for using maximum allowed energy efficiency targets in the BPS, as well as starting the targets using the 2027 benchmark. We also appreciate OTO centering the intention in the law of reducing greenhouse gas pollution as much as possible through the program. For BPS to work most effectively, building owners need good data to make sure they're meeting or exceeding the energy efficiency targets. We strongly support the draft requirements for larger qualified utilities to share data with building owners for compliance with BPS. We also encourage OTO to use its authority and resources to work with smaller utility companies so they too can ultimately report energy use to building owners for compliance. One improvement for the integrity of the program is to disallow buildings that are failing to meet their targets or do not have a plan to come into compliance with the program to be included in the benchmark average for the next target setting. We should not allow those refusing to follow the law that weaken the energy efficiency targets by their inaction. And then just like to give a shout out to Blake and the rest of the team for their rulemaking advisory committee process, being open and receptive to information as provided and changing the rules according to that new information. Just a great process and very open and transparent process. So appreciate y'all. And thanks for this opportunity to win this morning.
Thanks, Brad. And one thing that I just wanted to mention, I put it in the chat and then realized that probably it doesn't make much sense. If you are in the phone and you want to offer a comment, you can raise your hand with a star, three. And that will also, a star, pressing star and then three will also allow you to lower your hand after you offer a comment. I think we, we don't have many people on the phone today, but sometimes we do. So next I have, I think actually Danny was ahead of Claire, so we'll let Danny go next. I think you're unmuted now, Danny. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Good morning. My name is Danny Grady. I'm a Building Energy Program Manager for McKinstry, based in our Portland, Ora, office, where we employ roughly 300 people working to make our built environment more efficient. The need for good and effective policy to drive decarbonization and electrification is clear. Our goal is to work alongside elected officials, our clients and our communities to ensure technically feasible and effective climate policy that can deliver tangible outcomes. And this includes strong Building Performance Standards for Oregon. Commercial buildings consume a lot of energy while generating significant greenhouse gas emissions. Increasing the efficiency of these buildings is critically important for the health and comfort of occupants while simultaneously improving local air quality and utility bill savings for tenants. McKinstry specifically supports OTO's decision to set the energy efficiency targets for large commercial buildings at the maximum allowed under the law. We also support using the projected 2027 average EUI as the first target for all covered buildings. Great job. McKinstry also supports OTO requiring a stronger than Level One audit for alternative compliance in the draft rules. We additionally support the professional licensing and credentials for auditors in those draft rules. We additionally support the professional licensing and credentials for auditors in those draft rules. Finally, we support ODO's current plan to include measuring and reporting greenhouse gas emissions by building owners as part of an audit for buildings that will not meet their energy use target under the building performance standard. Like the others on this call, we do, we stand committed to the Oregon Building Performance Standards and its technical feasibility, knowing that the program is doable and will drive the intended benefits for our communities. I want to thank the committee and the process. I will echo the previous comments and saying that we really appreciate the transparency and flexibility of the committee and throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Appreciate your comments. So the next person that I had was Claire. Is it Claire?
Thanks, Wendy. Claire Brighoda. I work for Climate Solutions as Buildings Policy Manager. Climate Solutions is a regional nonprofit dedicated to clean energy solutions to the climate crisis. And we are in strong support of Oregon's Building Performance Standard and very appreciative of the rulemaking process so far. Huge shout out to the whole ODO team and the RAC who put in so many long hours to get these rules to where they are now, which is a really great place, especially would love to shout out the work to create the EUI targets, which are the strongest allowable under the law and the projected twenty twenty seven average as the starting place. This makes sense. This is the strongest starting point we can get under the law and is a very data-driven approach that should be achievable for businesses. So really appreciate that. Also appreciate ODO's efforts to ensure that we have really strong alternative compliance pathways, including audits and accountability for those audits that are professional, credentials, and robust, while still taking lessons learned from Washington to reduce administrative requirements wherever possible for building owners. A few notes of places where we'd love to see additional iteration and progress on the rules. So far have not, did not see a way for buildings who may be designated under a use type that is inaccurate to appeal that process if they appeal that designation, if they have data to support that they've been misclassified. I would love to see that just to ensure that buildings are being treated and judged against the correct correct competitors, correct associates. We'd also echo many of the comments made that we hope that ODO will continue to work with our smaller utilities to find a path forward for them sharing data with building owners, since this seems like the most efficient way for building owners to comply with the BPS is to get data from their utility rather than collecting it from their tenants. On the note of data, we'd also love to see an opportunity for tenants to have more access to data about energy use for their buildings, both current tenants and prospective tenants. We know, especially with energy rates being what they are today, that businesses, leases are making, need to make decisions about what's most affordable for them in their business. And having data about the energy use of their current building, their prospective building that they might be leasing from could be really valuable to customers and to potential business leases in this price sensitive time. And then finally, like to echo the comments that have been shared that buildings that are not in compliance with the Building Performance Standard not be included in benchmarking data to establish the EUI targets for prospective years. So as not to weaken the strong standard that ODO has set in the current draft rules. Again, thank you guys all so much for the hard work you've put into these rules. It really shows in the outcome and really appreciate all the hard work. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Claire. I appreciate your comments. Jennifer Jolly. Go ahead with, we'll get you unmuted. There you go. Oops.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is Jennifer Jolly with the Oregon Municipal Electric Utilities, and I also want to thank ODO for their engagement with the small municipal electric utilities regarding these rules. And we appreciate the sensible approach in the utility data aggregation piece of the rules. As we understand the proposal, only consumer-owned utilities with retail sales of three percent or more would be required to report the aggregated meter data to building owners subject to standards or reporting obligations. And so most of the OMEU small municipal electrics would be excluded from that requirement as drafted. And we think this is very sensible. Most OMEU utilities have limited IT staff and less sophisticated billing systems. Being subject to the meter aggregation data requirement would be a significant hardship and an unfunded mandate. And we thank ODO for recognizing this and focusing the requirement on utilities and building owners in a better position to bear these costs. Additionally, as with Washington State, we expect that most of the large buildings subject to the standard will be located in our state's most populous county. And OMEU does not have any utilities in Multnomah Counties. And we thank you so much for your, for working with our utilities.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments. So those are the only raised hands that I saw. I've called on all of them. And just a reminder, if you're on the phone, star three is how you would raise your hand. Oh, no, I see one more. I see Jay, Jay Carson, or please introduce yourself.
Right at the end, I'm appointed Jacob Carson. I'm a staffer at Ashray, which is the American Society of Refrigerating and Air Conditioning Engineers. I also live in Portland where I was born and raised, so it's delightful to be working so close to home. And I wanted to give a quick testimony today, a quick public comment today on behalf of Ashray, which has over five hundred members in the state of Oregon. We're a technical and professional society with a mission to serve humanity by advancing the arts and sciences of heating, ventilation, and air conditioning and refrigeration in their allied fields. And so on behalf of those five hundred members that we have in Oregon, I wanted to express our strong support for the use of Ashray Standard one hundred in these building energy performance standards to help us accomplish the state's goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and improving efficiency. We are very pleased that Oregon is addressing what we really see is the greatest existing opportunity to reduce energy consumption and carbon emissions by focusing on existing buildings. So our standard one hundred, which is standard one hundred, energy and emissions, building performance standard for existing buildings. This provides processes and procedures for reducing energy consumption and carbon emissions through improved energy efficiency and performance of all types of existing buildings. It gives, as many people have mentioned, owners, utility companies, and the government at every level a verifiable process that can reduce energy costs and support tax incentives, rebates, and related programs. It also includes tables to help jurisdictions determine its energy use intensity. That's the EUI targets that were mentioned earlier. And then I also wanted to say that in addition to standard one hundred, we have other resources that can assist Oregon in this effort, including standards for conducting commercial building energy audits, methods for determining and comparing building energy performance and greenhouse gas emissions. We also have multiple technical resource guides. Our Ashray members in the state can be subject matter experts to the Department of Energy and to the state as needed as during the implementation of these requirements. We can also provide resources such as technical assistance and training courses throughout the implementation process. We are just super stoked that Oregon is going down this path and we want to be as helpful a resource to the state as possible. So to that end, Ashray would be happy to provide any additional information and answer any questions as needed. Thank you for your consideration for working to improve the building performance in the state of Oregon.
Thank you, Jacob, for offering comments. We appreciate that. I don't see any of their hands right now. Is anybody else interested in offering their comments today during the hearing? I've seen one or two comments in the chat. So I will keep the hearing open for another couple of minutes. While I again reiterate that, number one, we appreciate everybody joining us today. And on this last slide that is up right here, you can see where to find relevant documents related to this rulemaking, including our hearing notice and draft rules, the draft Oregon-specific amendments to the Ashray Standard one hundred. There are also presentations and other background information from the various public meetings that we've held over the past several months, going back almost a year now. So all of that is available. I think there are even recordings of a couple of those meetings. So there are some resources online for those of you who still may have some questions or are a little bit new to this. Oh, I see we have one more hand up. Deborah Heron. You unmute Deborah. Abby, thank you. Please go ahead, Deborah. Oops.
We've followed this process closely and applaud ODOE for initiating the the rulemaking process after the passage of the bill and Walmart, in our company, we've established very aggressive goals for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So just have a couple of things to note before the final rule is made final. We do applaud ODOE for proposing reasonable target-setting process for existing multi-use buildings. That's definitely something that is within our wheelhouse as well as for many retailers and grocery stores. So we really commend the staff for the careful consideration of feedback about the multi-use that occurs in many of those kinds of buildings and the importance of having that designated within the rule. There are three other things we'd like to call attention to that we don't see as part of the the current draft of the rule. First and foremost, an opportunity to invest in off-site renewable energy types of projects like community solar or electric vehicles or other types of renewable energy certificates. Sometimes in the retail world, the site that you have to work with is restricted in some way by the topography, geography, trees, other buildings, and so forth. And so on behalf of the retail community and the buildings already in place, we would really like ODOE to consider incorporating off-site renewable and energy investment as part of the rule. We also, I believe, another organization mentioned this as well. We did not see an appeals process such that if a building was by some reason put into a category or into a class, that that building owner would have an opportunity to appeal that classification such that like buildings are being judged judged against like buildings. And then thirdly, we wanted to call attention to the regulatory portion of the rule and request that a building owner be able to submit a single report for all of the buildings that they manage in the state instead of a report by building. We will put into the website portal, some ideas about language to address that in section nine. But overall, there are a number of building owners, especially in retail across the state, that manage and operate numerous buildings and being able to do a single report for all of those properties would be really much and greatly appreciated. So thank you for the time and consideration and appreciate all the hard work that goes into this process.
Thank you, Deborah. We appreciate your thoughtful comments and engagement with really reading the the rules in detail as well as all of the other commenters. We appreciate how how much input we've received from so many people that have really helped to make the rules better and will continue to consider those over the next few weeks. So is there anyone else that would like to offer comments? I don't see any other hands raised at this point. So again, thank you all for your thoughtful comments and again, there are links for where you can find more information. And just to reiterate, written testimony will be accepted until the close of business, five P M. on Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty four. No other comments or exhibits will be accepted after this date unless ODO decides to open, reopen the public comments for everyone. After the close of the public comment period, the department will review all comments and summarize all comments in a hearing officer's report. And ODO will make the ultimate decision then regarding what will be in the rules. The department plans to file the permanent rules by the end of December with the rules becoming effective January first, twenty twenty five. And before we conclude, it looks like we have a more maybe question from Tim Miller.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me, Wendy?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to double check our, 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 our oral comments counted the same as written comments. Is this sufficient to, for you to have received our feedback?
It is. You're welcome to submit your comments in writing as well if you would like, but oral comments will be considered in just the same manner as as we, we are recording it so we can go back and and make sure that we catch all of the the details of what people have shared with us.
Great. Thanks, Wendy.
Yeah. And again, just to reiterate, you can email comments and you can also send comments in the the comment portal. Did you still have a question, Tim, or?
Nope.
Okay, great. So before we conclude the the meeting, are there any questions about the rulemaking process, deadlines, procedure? Any of the procedures? So the the time right now is ten forty six. I can leave the public hearing record open for another ten minutes or so, just in case anybody shows up late. But I think we've, we've received eight or nine public comments orally, as well as a couple of comments in the chat. Blake, is there anything else that you'd like to add before we wrap things up?
Nothing from me. Thanks, Wendy. And thanks everyone for their comments today.
So I will leave the leave the public hearing open until ten fifty five in case anybody else does show up and wants to offer comments, but other than that, we are that would conclude the public hearing. So I will formally end it and close it at ten fifty five. So you're welcome to, to go if you have other other engagements. And thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Good job.
Thanks, Alan, for being here. So Abby, can you share with us the log from the, the chat after we close up the meeting?
Yeah, as soon as I have the chat and everything, I'll send them over.
Yeah, so I see there were a couple of, of comments in the chat. Princess Carrie Mead, she did submit written comments that I got this morning, which I forwarded on to you. That she wanted to reiterate something from, from the comments and that others have made. Yeah, there are a few other comments that we'll want to catch. So for anyone still on the call, it is, I'm showing almost ten fifty two. And I'll keep the, the meeting open until, until ten fifty five in case there are any more comments, but I think we have largely wrapped up. All right. Am I good to go ahead and close the meeting? I would say give it maybe another one or two minutes, just to, since I promised. I might turn my video off. Let me see. Attendees. I think you can go ahead and shut it, turn off the recording now Abby.